This is the Community Task Force. We have the, um, Dr. Melford's gonna come up. Just John.
Dr. Melford?
And John, where you go?
Travis. You get John. Thank you, we're ready to, uh, head back. Order at this time.
We got a gavel.
Thank you. We're moving on to 11.01, Community Task Force on Facilities. Ballot Language First Reading. Dr. Melford?
Alright, so attached in your board agenda is the proposed resolution for, uh, the April 2023 bond issue in that. It contains also the proposed ballot language. It says portion in bold. And tonight is just a first reading. Provide feedback, ask questions. The board will be asked to approve this resolution on December 13th. If approved, then we will place it on the ballot for voters to consider in April. So that's kind of in short, I won't go into a lot of details on the resolution. Also attached is the proposed bond sequencing of the projects. That's just informational for tonight. On the 13th, we'll talk more through that. If you have any questions on the resolution. I would just point out, you will notice if you look at the 2019 language, it did not call out any specific projects. What we heard from those that were involved in, uh, the 2019 campaign, that some of the feedback they received from voters and potential voters was they wanted more detail of the projects that would occur in the ballot language. And that's why we added it this time around.
Real different questions?
Okay, at this time, uh, board, this is an information item. So we are not taking action tonight, correct?
Right.
This is, yeah, information, but just we're gonna talk about it. So yes, Sharita?
Um, the language I know is related to the discussion that the task force had regarding Persia and potential changes that may or may not occur. But it does not als- so it just says Persian school, which I understand is probably for that purpose. But it does not also state the building of additional spaces at the elementary schools. Is that necessary language to include?
It is not, so if you look at the first part, um, I'm gonna, just a little highlighting. So this part right there that's highlighted, in our last bond issue was not even there.
Right.
The language before that is, uh, broadened up essentially that it allows us to do any renovation or construction needed within the district. So that highlighted part just calls out the things that we are committing to getting done.
I guess my concern may or may not be, I'm not sure if I haven't really thought it through completely. But, um, without stating the addition of space at the elementary schools related to Persia, there may be voters who are not willing to support Persia changes without understanding that they would also get additional space at elementary. Again, haven't fully thought that through, but...
Yeah, so I think I would, uh, just kind of remind the board that at this point in time, we're not committing to any sort of change at Persia. Uh, rather, we are committing to a demographic and boundary study.
Right.
We'll inform that decision roughly a year from now.
But we've left the language open for the purpose of just in case.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
So can I tag on to that real quick, John? So that will be communicated to our public with the campaign, during the campaign?
What, what are you asking will be communicated?
What Sharita is talking about. Because our-
The demographic study.
The demographic study.
I think it should be, yes.
It would need to.
Yes.
Because I agree, what she's talking about is that should, and we've already talked about this as a board, rebuilding Persian school, rebuilding it as, renovating, rebuilding it as Persian Middle School 6 through 8?
Yeah.
Or Persian-
So that's not what that's referring to. It's, it's referring to if a portion of the building needs to be taken down and rebuilt. But I think in the campaign, certainly, we will let people know we, we are exploring whether it stays a middle school, I'm sorry, a K8, or becomes just a middle school.
Now, the demographic study would be conducted by the district before that final decision would be made, but our voters are wanting to be informed. So we would need to make sure that-
That the debt, like you said, that is part of the informing process through the campaign, not part of the ballot language.
Okay.
Similarly, the decisions that we will make around Robertson and Bingham will also be guided by the, uh, demographic study.
I didn't, I did note that those weren't included. Um, and I assumed that initial part of the language covered the potential for those to happen if and when we decide to do an elementary school.
That's correct.
Because we were able to move forward with the last bond. We were able to move forward because the money was managed well with the Phase 2 and 3 of Hillcrest and with York. So I know that it's, we can do that, but I just-
Yep, that's right.
Thinking for educational purposes of our community when that would happen.
Well, the last bond didn't have any school name-
No.
In the language.
No. But we did have it listed when the S-on-S group did their educational, uh, work in our community. They did have that list. Because the task force was a part of all of us, so.
I'm gonna tail onto her education piece. Educating the public, and I know that I've talked about this with you, that we will educate the public on that though there isn't going to be an increase to the debt service, debt service property tax levy, but there will be an extension of four years. So it's not free. We're just gonna be paying, our obligation is gonna be extended by four years.
That's correct. And that is estimated, right?
Right.
And again, just a reminder to the board, when we sell the bonds, then that's a 20-year note from the time that we sell the bonds. So when you look at our current bonds being projected to be paid off in 2040, if we sell the bonds, um, this year, 2023, then, and we sell them all, then we would anticipate that being paid off in 2043, right? So now, depending on the market, we may not sell all the bonds right away. So that could be 2044. But roughly, we're saying we expect it to extend 73 cent debt service levy by about four years.
And for this whole thing, a communication plan is already being developed.
That's correct. That's correct. So Stephen and his team are already developing factual information that the district can put out. And, uh, once, once approved by the board, then they'll go full steam ahead on getting all that finalized.
Kelly, you have a question?
Uh, so the, the beginning language that the district issued is general obligation bonds in the amount of $220 million. Does that provide the proper amount of flexibility? Because I know the last time around, we actually, maybe there's some nuance here that I'm missing. Um, I don't know, the last time around, we issued our general obligation bonds in an amount in excess of what we planned, but we ended up with more money in bonds sold than what we planned, right? So does this language offer enough flexibility in case the actual amount of the bond either exceeds or we decide some, something crazy happened and we, we didn't need to sell a full 220, maybe we only needed one, or something like that?
Yeah, so what this does is it allows us to essentially issue bonds up to, to, to 220 million. We can issue less than that should we decide to do that. We cannot issue more than that. However, what we can do through the selling of the bonds is we could potentially receive a premium, which is what occurred last time. Now, given the current market, we don't, we're not banking on that like we did last time.
If, if this allows us to sell up to 220 million, then why doesn't it say that? Why does it say in the amount of?
I don't have a great answer for you, other than that's the amount that we're asking the voters for.
Can we, uh, before the final, before the vote next time, can we double check on that?
We can check with our bond council, yes.
Have you heard back from them on the, whether it's a competitive or negotiated?
Yes, and that, and what I learned is quite an educational experience today. So those terms mean something different in the bond world. But at the end of the day, when they are sold, it will be a competitive process.
It will be a competitive process.
Right. So, yeah, we can talk more about the nuances of what that means in the bond world.
I figured it would be, but since the presenter hadn't specifically said that, I just wanted to double.
Yes.
Sure.
So you want us to send any other questions to you?
Right now, the only thing we're researching is can we change in the amount of, and change that to up to 220 million, right? That's only, so is there any other feedback, any other questions or requests that you want us to look into?
I am just guessing that folks want to know what we're asking.
I'm not asking-
Was the bond-
Does that, I'm asking, because the information I received before was that, for example, say interest rates doubled, right? And we decided, whoa, we don't want to sell 220 million dollars of bonds. We just want to do something, prioritize it and do less, right? I was told that once we pass this, we don't necessarily have to sell the full 220. We could do less. We can do more, but we could do less. So I was just clarifying that does this language allow that flexibility? I'm not saying we have to have it, I'm just saying does, as it's written, as it's written, does it allow?
And I do have that answer, yes. This, this language allows us, should we choose to, to not sell the full 220.
The last time around, I know we sold all the bonds, with the exception of 20 million?
There's two rounds, I don't know.
Then we went forward with the second round. But I think this is a good question that you could get back to all of us. Kelly's question, we can get that back to all of us. Anything else at this time?
But we could, once, let's say this bond passes, you don't, you can sell the bonds a year, let's say interest rates double. You can wait two years to sell them, right? There's not a time cap, is there?
That's correct. I think the cap is within three years of passage. I think you have to be 75%.
75%?
That sound right, Travis?
Okay. Okay. But I had a question. Was the bond planning document attached? Or was that more recently attached?
The resolution.
Am I going crazy? Because I'm not seeing these things. No, the resolution was there.
Oh, you're talking about the sequencing?
Yeah, was that there before?
No, we just attached it today.
Okay.
And again, that's just for you to start reviewing before next go-round.
Okay. Thank you. That's it, I don't have any questions.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Anything else you want to? Thank you all.
Okay. Moving on. Okay. Going to 12.01, Change Orders and Agreements.
So you have your standard report in front of you. Uh, several of the items specific to Field and Twain, uh, you received a couple of weeks ago in your weekly board update for your awareness so that we can continue that work, uh, moving forward. Those do represent approximately $110,000 of this list. Other things to note, you will see several items of FFNE for Jarrett. That does include the kiln for the art room, as well as the additional custodial equipment that's needed due to the larger building that they'll be moving into. Uh, you'll also see, uh, the same custodial equipment for York as well, again, due to the larger building. Something to note, uh, even though Williams has been finished for a year and we've been in school for a year, sometimes things come up that we recognize that we need to take care of. And so you'll see a couple items there specifically around, uh, the water softer needed within the kitchen to protect that equipment that was missed, um, as well as a little bit of hardware for the doors. Um, but also some D-Deck floors and tactical wall panels that weren't, um, needed either. So the total for tonight's list represents $161,091.89 for your consideration.
Um, at this time, um, this is an action item. So I'm going to ask for a motion at this time. So that the board approved the change orders agreement says presenter. Do I have a motion? Sharita, and I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Kelly.
So we have a motion on the table and a second. Anyone have questions for Dr. Shaw?
Let's have a quick question. On the change orders for, for Field and add storm sewer installation. Uh, there we go.
You say for storm sewer installation?
Yes, that additional storm sewer installation, and addition, after seed and sod. Is that additional seed and sod?
So the storms, the storm, the storm sewer installation, uh, it was recognized on the north side of the storm shelter in between the existing building, the south side of the existing building at Field and where the storm shelter was built. Uh, there wasn't adequate, uh, all of the drainage from that area was gonna go straight into that, what was now a new courtyard. Um, that court, because there wasn't adequate drainage there, it would then eventually, it's not gonna go into the gym, but it could get underneath where that corridor came through. Uh, so there was a need to bring in the additional storm sewer to be able to funnel that water out to prevent flooding that would have created because of that. Uh, the sod and, uh, seed that we've recognized, which is in the bid specifications, based on the square footage and the footprint, if you will, of the gymnasium, there's a certain amount of ground that would be disturbed that we would need to re-sod or re-seed or sod. However, when you actually do the construction, it then becomes bigger than what you realize. And so the need to bring in additional seed or sod is there, um, after the fact. So it's, it's just simply the fact that they didn't plan for enough. It's a larger space, we need to add more so that it's not mud and dirt.
Okay.
Okay, so at this point, we'll vote. A motion carries. At this time, we're gonna, we will be moving on to our quarterly bond update. I'll just keep you up there.
So either apologies or congratulations, but the bond quarterly update is shortened condensed tonight due to the length of the agenda items. Uh, so however you feel about the quarterly update will depend on whether you, how you feel about it. But what we will do, um, Stephen's team did get out and, and obviously, we want to show you the new progress response video, as well as a few of the slides that I always show you. Um, but we will get the other additional pictures that are not here on the slideshow tonight. We'll get those added to the presentation before it gets uploaded to the website um, so that you, as well as the public, can see those. But, uh, as we work through this, uh, this will be the last time that I'm gonna show you these five projects because I won't be showing you anything about Twain and Field anymore. They have their occupancy certificates. Kids and staff are using them daily, uh, and it's a great celebration. We're, we're gonna be having ribbon cuttings very, very soon. Uh, so those won't be on here, but we'll continue to, uh, show York, Jarrett and Hillcrest. And I'm excited that when I give you the presentation in February, that those should all be completed. Um, and we'll be finishing the final touches on, um, specifically Jarrett and York at that time before they begin classes in those spaces. So, uh, we're at the nearing the end. We're so inching closer and it's been quite a journey to get through all of these roughly $193 million worth of projects. Uh, excited to see, um, us be there. Um, but great work from the team, great work from all of those involved. The principals, staff, everybody that has really made the nearing completion of all of these projects possible. Uh, and you will begin to see this new sequencing plan that we will present to you, um, at the next meeting. Uh, again, this is where our projects have taken place. You can see the anticipated completion dates. Um, we have moved a little bit to where York and Jarrett we are. Uh, we do have substantial completion dates on those two projects, uh, toward the end of January now. Uh, but Hillcrest is still slated to finish up the end of this month, with those students starting, uh, in the new space. Um, within a couple of weeks after we come back from holiday break, uh, which I know they are thrilled about and excited, and, and so are all of us. And this is just the, um, financial summary that, uh, you, you do see this monthly in a different way within the quarterly, or with the monthly financial report. Um, but again, this is, it shows you our fund source. Um, I will, I always update the, in the interest earnings, uh, as you, as we work through this. You'll also see the estimated cost for each of the projects and the total adjusted project. These are real dollars that hold directly off of the monthly financial report. Uh, but what it's showing us is the available, um, 4.12 million still left from the 10 million that the, that the district committed to, uh, these projects. So when we bring forth, uh, in December, some recommendations for architectural services to begin design for Pippin and Reed and a couple storm shelters, these are the dollars that will be funding that. Uh, so the dollars are there, they're dedicated for the purpose of that. So with that, we'll watch the most updated video and then I'll open it up for questions. I know it's been short and sweet, but are there any questions that I can answer for you at this time around the, the projects and the progress that's, that we're continuing to make?
Comments? You know, it's been amazing to watch this process starting from 2018 where we are today, and I'm anxious for some of my fellow board members as they start this journey of this, um, project coming forward to have the opportunity to see this, starting from, I can about bond language all the way up to, um, in the future, watching my best promise with rebuilding this far as the district. So I, uh, talked to a parent at SPS University whose children will be going to the new Jarrett. They are so excited to get into that building. Um, it was a fun conversation. And then I also have a classmate that on his bike ride along the length of Hillcrest, he does a little video, so I've been able to watch the progress. You know, on a daily basis. And I guess a couple nights ago, they had the lights on, outside lights on, for the first time, have all the outside lights on. Anyway, so got to see that process. So, uh, all the communities are very excited. And, um, you know, they're very encouraged by that we are, um, following our progress as promised. So we have a lot of folks in our community that are very supportive of what we have done and hopefully will be supportive of what we want to do in the future. Great, great work.
Thank you.
Hey. Moving on, um, to our strategic, date strategic plan discussion. Got work to do here.
The picture changed.
Picture changed?
At the top. I might make it just perfect. You know, that picture?
It's pictures. Good evening, board members. We are back to continue our discussion around the strategic plan. Uh, so just have a few slides before we dig in. And I will tell you, there have been changes made to the one pager since I sent you a copy of the draft, uh, based on additional feedback that I received the past two days. So I do have a, a fresh copy for you that we'll get into, uh, shortly. Just to review, our purpose tonight is to continue our dialogue on potential mission, vision, and SMART goals for the strategic plan. Remember, we're not discussing strategies tonight. That will come back and be presented to you next Tuesday, uh, December 6th during our board workshop. So our agenda tonight is to review the mission and vision, look at your feedback and discuss the themes, um, and how everything aligns to MCF6, and then to review the priorities and goals, which I figure have, have been revised. For mission and vision, when we sent the, um, survey out after the board meeting two weeks ago, we asked board members to provide us feedback on the mission and vision. And based on your feedback, uh, we took a stab at revising that. Remember, at the end of the day, board members, your feedback is welcome so we can make sure we land on the appropriate mission. Our current mission statement, uh, is here for you. Uh, and it did change to reflect the current strategic plan, uh, that was changed several years ago. The revised mission that we are proposing, based on your input, is Springfield Public Schools is committed to the academic preparation and well-being of each student. I know I've heard from some of you, academic, the academic piece, uh, I don't think is an issue or concern for board members, but the use of the word well-being is, uh, one that, uh, several board members brought up. And so I want to spend a little time, um, discussing that, uh, based on what's presented. Also, board members, the document that you received that had the governing priorities and the, uh, proposed SMART goals is a reflection of all seven board members' feedback. Now, everyone didn't get everything that they proposed and suggested, but hopefully you saw the comments that, that you provided, uh, in the feedback document and you see that reflected on that one pager. We call it a one pager, but it really comes out of two pages that was emailed to you. So let's just take a few minutes and just kind of talk about, uh, the proposed, the current mission and the, uh, proposed revision. And remember, you can always leave it the way it is, or you can make changes. Comments, feedback, suggestions, or wonderings?
What is it with well-being?
Well, some board members, uh, struggled with well-being because they thought it was beyond, that we were doing, uh, something beyond our academic purpose. Um, and that it took, it took into consideration of the other things that sometimes that occurs beyond the school day or other needs that need to be met for students.
I'll speak to that. Because I'm not a fan of that term being in the mission statement. And it's not the, um, certainly not to be mistaken with, I'm not concerned with the well-being of our students. It's, it's the, um, I think as I've spoken about before, in my view, we should be singularly focused on the mission of the most important goal and to not, not throw anything else in there that doesn't have a, a better place further down in the plan. And again, to me, it's, it's focusing on academics. And I do think that there's a place somewhere in SMART goals or wherever else in the plan, how, um, how we can address the well-being of each student. And the way I look at that is, as a district, we are, um, certainly interested in the well-being of each student to the extent that it- of each student to the extent that it benefits their academic success. So I think, just like well-being, facilities, budgeting, teach, like everything, I still think should point, everything else is further down in the plan, thinking a pyramid, and everything points up towards the mission, with the primary mission being centered in some way around academic whatever. And to that note, I guess I'm not falling quite with academic preparations. And let me be clear, this mission, I think, is far better than what we have. And I think we're getting there, it's very, this is, we're improving here, so we're starting, I'm starting to nitpick, of course, but I'm curious what academic preparation means as it relates to what our mission is. Preparation, I find, is a strange word, that just, it kind of misses the mark for me as to why we ended up with that word.
What would you prefer?
I don't know. I'm thinking, to me, it's about, we can't, we can't force-feed academics or an education to each child, right? But we can provide them the opportunity for academic success or academic achievement or something of that nature. Yeah, I guess we want to prepare them, but the way we do that is providing opportunity for each student to succeed in their academic journey, right? So I guess if I was to take this and just tweak it to perfect it to something that would make more sense to me, it would be something along the lines of, you know, Springfield Public Schools is committed to providing the opportunity for academic success for each student.
Say that again?
Springfield Public Schools is committed to providing the opportunity for academic success for each student.
If I remember right, this is almost verbatim what one of the school board feedbacks were, and it wasn't mine, because I would have remembered it. And if I remember right, it wasn't the word preparation, but it was success in that feedback. You know how everybody had their suggested mission? I don't remember yours. But if I remember right, it actually had the word success in there. I wanted to interject that, sorry.
I don't know if it was mine or not.
I'm looking at, I'm looking both.
No, I mean whoever.
No, we didn't, I didn't put names on it.
Do you have a copy of it?
I have it.
I go to the emails. If I remember right.
You, the mission, there's a comment here that says, "The mission statement needs to be concise and measurable and needs to include the words academic achievement," referring to that one?
No, that's the one I wrote. I think, it sounds like something I would say.
I do not have names on here.
Academic achievement.
Oh, my team does not have names.
But I didn't have well-being in mind, and the person that had well-being, it said success.
Focus on academic achievement, I was just going back to the old mission statement, one small change, SPS exists for the academic excellence of each student.
Okay, well, maybe I'm wrong.
Maybe that is? Yes, page two.
Never mind.
All from the M66 standard language, so me, someone typed with M66.
Oh, somebody typed, what does M66 say? Is it preparation or success?
They say preparation.
Oh, they say preparation.
And well-being. And well-being.
Sounds like a bad example.
Is that we have a focus on academic preparation and well-being for, on that exact spot, that our plan has to show that within it. Right, so that's just something that they'll look for.
I'm also not a fan of well-being. I mean, I get that M66 wants that, I don't know if it needs to be in the mission statement. Of course, I want the well-being of each student, but we only have them for seven, eight hours of every day. And I don't want to give this impression that we're going to usurp the parents, because ultimately, the well-being of each student rests with the guardians.
So for the six and a half hours they're with us.
Right, so for the six and a half hours they're with us, I get it. And I just, it can be interpreted as, we're not just schools, we're the Department of Social Services, which we're not. We're going to do what we can to provide for students, you know, nutritionally, and help with the resources for clothing or what have you, with our coordinator of site interventionist and equity department, we have many different departments, you know, and people that try to fill that role. But our fundamental purpose for existing, except if I remember right, the mission is why we exist, and the vision is where we want to be. So I feel that our fundamental reason for existing is public education, is to educate the public, not take care of them. I mean, it's great that we take care of them to the extent that we can, but that's not why we exist. And so I understand what M66 is demanding, but I just feel that it could, I'm all about if we, I mean, they're just words, right? They're just symbolic. At the end of the day, it's the goals that count, right? Those are the things that we're going to specifically achieve. But I think that the symbolism does carry something with it, and I want it to be, again, I'm very pragmatic. What's doable, and if we limit what we expect of ourselves to do, then we're more likely to hit that target. Doesn't mean we're not going to ensure the well-being of each student. It just, it's the message of why do we exist?
I think that was my statement. I found that, I don't know if you pulled up that article, so I found an article that talked about what do successful public schools have in their mission statement? And one of the terms that was used was academic success.
Oh, it was success.
It was success. However, M66 uses the term academic preparation.
Okay.
M66 also uses the term well-being. The article I found talked about social development and empowerment and citizenship. And I think that, yeah, I mean fundamentally, we're a school, we're here for the academic preparation or academic success of our students, but we also understand that a student who is hungry is not going to learn well. A student who doesn't feel safe and secure in their classroom is not going to learn well. So I think, like you said, they are with us for a period of time during the day, and I think that we should be focused also on the well-being in order to support the academic preparation or success.
I like what you just said, but in my mind, that's further clarifying what I was suggesting, is those things, those things are supportive of academic success. Therefore, I feel they find a place more logically further down in the deal.
I think for you, they're supportive of academic preparation. I don't know that for some people, they correlate academic preparation also with well-being. So us making a statement that we recognize the well-being of our students is important, and just stating that we recognize it's important, I think will help to bring others along that the well-being supports academic preparation.
And I just, well, I would support that, again, further down in the document, that it does support academics. And also, one more thing to note, that I did not realize to this moment that that was taken really verbatim from M66. I don't, I don't think that's the best way for us to go about it, is to say, well, M66 says you have to be focused on academic preparation, well-being of each student, therefore we just say Springfield Public Schools is committed to the academic preparation, well-being of each student. I think it, it needs to be ours and not theirs. And we can achieve what M66 is asking us to achieve without just repeating their words.
I just want to state that, I work in special education, and academic achievement and academic success are terms that may or may not be inclusive to all students, and preparation for whatever their next steps in life will be, for me, is a better term. And given that, when we think about student learning, student learning happens when students are well taken care of. And so I don't think that they are separate, nor are they in opposition of one another. I think they work hand in hand. And all developmental learning specialists will talk about the social, emotional development that goes along with your cognitive and academic preparation of learning.
Two more I've heard outside of the well-being. SPS is committed to providing the opportunity for academic success for each student? Or SPS is committed to the academic success of each student?
I like preparation still, because they're preparing them for whatever it is that comes next in life, whether it's to be a good consumer in our public settings, to be a good citizen, to be a worker, to be a student, whatever, that we're preparing them for that. We're not preparing all students to go on to college, you know, we're preparing students to be good citizens.
I think, what I said, I think speaks to that, because we're providing the opportunity for each student. Their choice and their family's choice, how to take that opportunity and how to apply it into the real world. So I think what, don't think what I suggested with opportunity goes against what you said. I think it's.
I'm not opposed to the language that you use regarding opportunity. I am opposed to taking out well-being. I'm not married to preparation as much as I am married to well-being. I'd be willing to negotiate on that one.
So can we reword that?
I'm working on it. Okay. Help me, don't be, help me. SPS is committed to providing the opportunity for academic success, for the academic success and well-being of each student? No?
I, okay, Springfield Public Schools is committed to providing the opportunity for academic success and well-being of each student. I don't know if that, that might be a little bit clunky, but very, I think a couple little different things in there.
I'm going to push back just a little bit. I'm not, is there a reason that we're just committed to the opportunity rather than just being committed to the academic preparation or success of a student?
I think so, because we, it's really difficult for us to guarantee outcomes.
Preparation doesn't.
How about, okay, here's a compromise. If we leave the mission like that, how about under governing priority, because it basically re-says what you're saying, and governing priority one, unless it's changed, hold on, let me go read it. No, it's still the same.
You posted anyone up on here?
Well, no, she, yeah, she did. It says, "We are committed to preparing all students to be college and or career-ready", with an emphasis on each student reaching their full potential. There, we could say, "We are committed to preparing all students to be college and or career-ready", with an emphasis on giving each student the opportunity to reach their full potential.
Why is that, why, why is that opportunity word is just that important to that statement?
I'm not opposed to it, I'm just trying to understand.
I'm trying to understand it too.
I thought we kept opportunity.
I'm pushing back a little.
Oh, to take it back out?
I am.
Oh.
Well, I guess I don't have a position either way, I'm trying to understand why we're committed to the opportunity rather than just being committed to the success.
Well, part of it is what Sharita said, is we, what academic success looks like for each student is different, because they take different paths in life. And I think our, I just think the most important goal we can have is to provide the most opportunity for each of our students, whereas it's very difficult to guarantee success or specific career path or anything like that, you can't.
Why I didn't want success, I like preparation better.
Why I think, to me, the term opportunity is very important when it describes literally everything we do, is we should strive to provide as much opportunity for each individual student as possible, as opposed to providing outcomes, because that's a, that's something that's not.
Then let's take out the word success and keep in opportunity.
Opportunity for academic preparation?
I don't think opportunity and preparation need to go together, because I think preparation kind of fits that bill, but I don't necessarily agree with opportunity and success together.
Well, I think where we were getting was a little bit closer to a negotiation, where we had opportunity for success and keeping well-being of each student. So which would you prefer?
It was Danielle who was pushing back on.
I guess to me, opportunity for academic success and academic preparation kind of mean the same thing, but if that's, I'm fine with that, as long as we can keep well-being.
So opportunity for academic success, but we keep well-being in some format in there? And if we did that, would anybody be opposed to that?
My only concern is what it sounds like, because then it's an opportunity for well-being. And that's, yeah.
So let us share what the draft is, and then we will go back and wordsmith it, but we're close. Steven, if you don't mind sharing?
I think that that could get tweaked in some way.
Just as a lifelong educator, I'm just going to tell you that when you throw in the opportunity for success, we're saying that, well, we're going to give you the opportunity, you take it.
That's kind of what I'm hearing you say, that's just why I don't like the opportunities.
And I don't really, I mean, it's okay, I'm going to let you guys go with it, but I just believe that that's like, I'm going to provide you the opportunity to learn this lesson or not. That was not my approach as a teacher. I'm going to expect you to learn this, and I'm going to work as hard as I can with you to learn this, so.
That is equity with regards to culturally confident practices, when you have set high expectations, and so.
My expectation is, as a district, that we are going to, we are committed to academic success for students. And the word, absolutely, we're going to provide as many opportunities as possible to get them there, but I'm just not crazy about that being in our mission. But again.
That makes sense to me, I mean, your rationale resonates with me, absolutely.
Are you proposing different language? Are we voting on this tonight? No, you're not voting tonight. No, no, you're not voting tonight.
I'm just explaining why I'm just not crazy about, that we're going to offer you the opportunity to do this. I don't want to offer them the opportunity, I want them to do, my expectation is that we do everything possible as a district to, we expect their success.
And setting high expectations makes the difference in a classroom with student success and not successes. It is the expectation. And when you say, "Well, I just gave them the opportunity", it sounds like, well, you know, I don't expect you to take it. That's what it sounds like.
I think what you meant was maximizing the opportunity, is that what you mean?
Well, just as a, we're sitting here as a district, we expect our staff, we expect our superintendent, we expect our staff, we don't just give you the opportunity to do, you know.
We're going to give you the opportunity. We're going to give you the opportunity.
We expect.
That was your choice.
High expectations of you, of the staff, of teachers, of our students, I mean, but it's okay.
We gave you every opportunity to do it, but, you know, you didn't take it.
That's the whole classroom teacher again.
I see that differently as it relates to opportunity for academic success. If it were opportunity to, I mean, you're being a little bit more specific, if it was opportunity to undertake or not undertake in a lesson plan, that's a different deal. The mentality that you just said, having each teacher being determined to provide the best education for every child is obviously, in my mind, how you provide an opportunity for each student to be academic success.
That's kind of contrary to what you said earlier.
We're not talking about the process, we're talking about the outcome.
But you just said earlier that we can't force outcomes, so we can give people opportunities and it's up to them whether they take it or not, that's what you said earlier.
Yes.
So now you're saying that we do care about the outcomes, and we do expect everybody to do the best with the opportunities. I'm confused.
I think of opportunity, or at least my interpretation of what you're saying, is that we're going to provide the very best teachers, the very best support, and a commitment to providing you with everything that you need.
I saw, let's say that instead.
That's an opportunity.
Let's take out opportunity and say that.
We're going to give you, you know, opportunity to take AP, we're going to give you choice programs, we're going to give you IB, we're going to have STUDY, we're going to have alternative sites. Like, to me, that all encompasses opportunities.
To get to the result of academic preparation or academic success.
But I hear.
So if that's the means, that's the mission, the goal.
Still, at the end of the day, can't guarantee an outcome.
Sure.
Our mission is to be able to provide the very best in everything, and the very best supports. Now, that's our mission.
Therefore, our vision would be academic success for every child, but our mission would be five yards.
So then the vision is, everybody does do it. Preparation, that's the preparation part for the mission. The vision would be success.
Scott, we haven't heard from you. We've not heard from you.
Here we are. Kind of chimed in there.
Still going back to, with well-being, but I'm still not over that, but.
Wait a minute, okay.
I think the term opportunity needs to come out. I think we need to say, okay, we're committed to academic excellence, or we're committed to. We're committed to providing students the highest level of academic excellence or success.
Clarify what you meant by well-being. So you wanted...
I struggle with what... Success is well-being. I mean, you could say success is well-being, right? As a synonym of well-being.
I would. So what would be your dream mission? Because we're having some differences, so let's just... I wanna hear your alternative.
That's what I'm gonna hear.
Maybe we can all agree on that.
You know, the... Safely educate all students to the highest level of academic excellence or success.
Can you say it one more time, please?
I said safely educate all students to the highest level of academic excellence or academic success.
It's the safety in there.
Do you want one more time? They're trying to capture.
What do you mean by safely?
But that's the safety part of it. You try to commit it to safety within our schools.
So Springfield Public Schools is committed...
So I said...
Safely.
Safely educate all students to the highest level of academic excellence.
Safely educate is confusing.
Yeah, okay. I can get that, yeah.
I like the way it's drafted.
Or here?
I do. Just go on record saying that.
Talk some more?
Well, maybe I'm going anywhere. Well, one other idea is SPS is committed to the well-being of each student by providing high-quality academic opportunities.
I like that one better.
Can you read that again? I'm sorry.
SPS, Springfield Public Schools, is committed to the well-being of each student by providing high-quality academic opportunities.
I'm better with that usage of well-being than I am with this one.
Okay, let me say it again. SPS, Springfield Public Schools, is committed to the well-being of each student by providing high-quality academic opportunities.
I like that opportunity side.
We're getting there.
Jesus, thank you.
Dr. Lathan.
Maryam, you're happy with it?
Okay, I'm gonna write that down.
We can print over there.
Scott, I think everybody's okay.
Okay.
So you did capture that, right? Okay, thank you, Yvonne. Yvonne, you captured.
We got all our words.
We should be editing on the screen like we normally do in our own meetings. Okay, thank you.
We got all our words in the right place.
She said edit on the spot. That way we...
We don't wanna lose that.
Wait, wait, wait. Before you chat, will we lose this one?
We don't wanna lose that one.
Okay, don't worry about it. We'll keep going.
It's you only right now anyway.
Okay, so let's say it one more time.
I realize that we have a quorum.
For the people in the back. Springfield Public Schools...
We're not voting, okay?
You're not voting tonight?
But I just wanted to see that previous.
We'll work on it in another view. We'll bring it up shortly. Springfield Public Schools is committed to the well-being of each student by providing high-quality academic opportunities.
You know, I'm just hearing it and processing it now, but I like it a lot.
That's good.
Somebody's captured it on another document. Okay. Got it? Springfield Public Schools is committed to the well-being of each student by providing high-quality academic opportunities.
And the key word is "by". So we're committed to their well-being by providing academic opportunities because we want them to be well for the rest of their life.
Yes.
Because if they're prepared, they will be well.
They will be well.
Rather than, we're gonna take care of all your needs. We're taking care of your educational needs. So in that sense, that word "by" means a lot.
That's what our laners can say. Say "by".
What was that?
Website.
All right, so we're gonna keep going. Now we're gonna move on to the vision statement. Our current vision... Our vision statement is projected here on the screen. Once again, listening to the information, and I know some of you have some concerns around some of the words, but this was once again pulled directly from feedback. It was one board member talked about dreaming, and so that's how that revised vision came about. Springfield Public Schools will be the district of choice that equips students to be informed, empowered, and engaged contributors to society.
I see this as a combination of two comments that board members made. And I really liked the first part, to be the district of choice. My problem with the rest of it is, it kind of reminds me of, and I'm not a fan of it, relevant, engaging, personal. Because then you need a glossary to define those words. And here you need a glossary to define these words because I know what empowered means, because I read that, the feedback. And I know what this person meant, and I agree with it. I agree with the definitions of all these. But I worry that this could be interpreted as social engineering of kids and that we're trying to... It's not... You know, empowering is being prepared so that they can achieve whatever they want. But I just worry about how that comes across without having a definition. And also, if I remember correctly, this was the dream, like, this is a dream. And again, I go back to being a very pragmatic person. I'm a fan of fewer words and things that are more attainable for all of our students. And so I'd like to be more specific in the language and maybe cut it back a tiny bit.
I like empowered, and I included that in my feedback. Because again, I think about the diversity of our student population and not just our mainstream students who we expect to go into college or to a career path. When my students who I work with in special education are empowered, they have the ability to communicate effectively by whatever means that is possible. When I say empowered, it provides them to have voice and to... For me, literacy is empowered, apparently. So if you can read, you are empowered. So for me, that word empowered deals with not just making them, you know, social justice warriors. That's not the way that I meant it. It means that we are giving them the skills that are gonna make them successful in life.
The way you just worded that, I agree with. But the reading of the way this just says empowered, I believe it needs to... It's either a different word or more specific about what we mean by empowered because you can be empowered to do wrong, or you can be empowered to do right.
But why would we do that? Why would we empower kids to do wrong?
Well, then let's be more specific about it because...
But would that ever be an option?
I think we can be more clear about what we're saying here because there are dictators that were empowered, okay? I think that there's something that needs to be a little bit more specific about what our vision is for these students beyond the broadness of just that term. In my mind, it's like, what are we... These aren't the exact words that I think we would put in our vision, but what my vision is, is empowering them to be happy and productive members in society.
You can't force happiness.
I'm just saying that would be my vision. That would be my vision of what would be the best thing for children to attain as they go off into society is to be happy and productive. So it just, again, like Maryam said, it's a little bit off to me with the exact words. It's not even that I'm against the word specifically, but standing alone, I feel like it needs a little bit more to be specific.
How do you feel about using the exact words how we want to empower them? And I just had Dr. Lathan look it up. Yeah, but then we'd have to cut some of the other stuff out.
Empowered was described meaning to continue to pursue their goals and highest potential.
Could you just add like positively empowered? I hate...
More what you said. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. I hate any more words to a vision, but...
No, go ahead.
No, that was just... You said empowered to do good. So I was suggesting perhaps we add positively empowered.
Well, what did you just say, Dr. Lathan?
She was reading, yeah.
Empowered was defined here as to continue, based on feedback, continue to pursue their goals and highest potential.
Empowered to pursue their goals and highest potential.
Right, the board member defined what they meant by empowered, informed, and engaged.
And that might be a lot to put in a vision, but when you put it in that context, it makes more sense.
What if you put that in and take out the word informed and engaged and actually said all that?
Okay, so let's... Springfield Public Schools will be the district of choice that equips students to pursue their goals and highest potential?
Oh, to be empowered to do all that, or no? Is that not how it was stated?
Right, they would... I thought they would... The board member was defining empowered. That's how they defined informed, empowered, and engaged. It was me. Oh, okay, okay. Is that what you were referring to? Okay, so you were defining what each of those items mean. But going back to Springfield Public Schools will be the district of choice that equips students to pursue their goals and highest potential. As engaged contributors to society.
Informed and engaged? What was that? Informed and engaged contributors?
She's saying informed and engaged contributors? Then we're gonna reread it.
You're not gonna be empowered unless you're informed. So that's like, to me, a double...
So we're gonna try... Wanna read it?
Can you read it one more time? Where'd the empowered word go?
We replace that with...
Replace with the definition.
I'm gonna push back on informed. Well, you'll have to be informed if you're gonna do all the rest of it.
Also a strange word today.
You have to be informed to pursue your... You know, to do all that and to be engaged.
You would hope that you would be informed.
You would hope, but we got a whole lot of people out here who are loud and wrong because they're not informed.
Well, I think that's why I say it's an interesting word.
Scott, let's give it back to you. You can be empowered and engaged.
That's your opinion. I mean, I don't understand.
You know what? Last time you fixed it, so can you fix the stalemate this time too?
I think I fixed it before, but...
You reworded the whole word.
Okay, listen, listen one more time. Took out the "born".
I do like that. It's nuanced, it's nuanced to me, but I think...
Nobody does. Yeah, you do.
Okay, bye, Bart.
Bring it in, bring it in, bring it in.
Okay, Steven, one more time. We're getting there. Okay, can you read it a little louder?
Without informed is what you want me to read. It would say, "SPS will be the district of choice..."
Hang on a second, we still have... Okay. Okay, done.
"SPS will be the district of choice that equips students to pursue their goals and highest potential as engaged contributors to society." I personally like that.
Like that? I like the goals and highest potential because everybody has different potentials. But everybody could... We should try to let them achieve their highest potential.
Are you okay with it, Maryam?
I'm... Yeah.
You said you were... I am, so there's three left to discuss, I guess, if...
Danielle, your thoughts?
I think I'm gonna need to see it in front of me. I'm not saying no, I'm not opposed to it.
Can someone run up here?
Yeah, we're gonna bring it up.
Sorry.
Well, that's okay. Yeah, it's good to see it. And Sharita, wanna see it?
Yes.
Never take part in the...
We didn't leave much... It was up there. We revised it, revised. So I think it's... I says the same thing. We just wonder what you did seven... Seven years ago. Okay, so this is the process. Yeah, okay. Good, we did a lot of this. You did, okay. I sure hope he agrees with this.
It's not...
I know, but...
Probably faster with just fewer people. I also have an opportunity to...
Okay, here you go, guys. Wait, don't take it away, I'm gonna read it now. It was the addition... So I just took off current because we're done with that pretty much, right? So this was original, or what we came in tonight as the revised mission, and then the additional revision is what we're doing, what we did now. So there's your mission.
That was rebased.
So you're looking at the additional and then what we came in with tonight. And then here is, I think, the vision.
Look at the additional, don't look at the top.
Because SPS is a district of choice, so...
It is. That came up multiple times, actually. It was about competence in the district, being the district of choice, being the best. That was part of the feedback about that.
Is anyone opposed... One of my feedback points for the current vision was that it didn't say all students. Is anybody opposed to saying that equips each student to pursue their goals and highest potential?
Oh, yeah, each student, that consists.
We already have...
To keep it consistent with the mission.
Great point, I agree.
Oh, my gosh, it's getting longer.
What word?
We got rid of an S.
What?
We got each.
What?
We're on the pitch. We're on the pitch. They're just saying because we used the word "each" in mission that we should use it.
And you're also losing an "a".
Yes.
I can't see that you put that "will" to equip.
I mean, I like the addition of the "each", but...
We can go back and change it again.
Vocabulary and they can work on it.
Because once we take this, we'll revise and then we'll send it out again.
There should be district of choice to equip each student.
I'll look it over.
Okay, we'll let you do that.
I don't like ing words.
I agree.
It's just...
You agree with what part?
I like that.
With me, okay. You're not supposed to...
I like that.
Did somebody type that one? We have that version? Okay, okay.
Okay, oh.
Each student pursue their goals and highest potential and engage contributors. Okay, we'll keep moving, remember? You'll have a chance to make...
And you know what? I'm okay if we dropped off engaged contributor to society.
Oh, boy.
But I'm okay with that too.
Okay, so we are going... So right now, we have a draft mission. We have a draft vision. You will see it again in print once everything is consolidated and you can provide additional feedback. Want okay to keep going?
That's good. Let's keep going.
From the information board members that you provided, there were several things that we want to bring to your attention. We made some changes to around the governing priority, language shifts for number one and four. Smart Goal 1.4 placement, that was something that came up in the feedback. We wanted to make sure with the governing priorities, you saw the M sub six alignment. I know several board members mentioned that throughout the feedback document. Also, several board members pointed out ensuring that the strategy... Like I said, I know we're not focused on strategies tonight, but I wanna make sure I validate the information that you said is that equitable access, governing priorities, or strategies are we throughout those four priorities. And you will see that when we bring back strategies. Also, your feedback was around principal accountability, holding principals accountable, implementation, and following the proposed strategic plan. And then also commented feedback around teacher effectiveness and professional learning. And then board members, some of them talked about the board being committed to effective governance. So those were things that came out based on your individual feedback.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So now board members are gonna actually pass a revised handout to...
You're referring to the one that's on here?
No, it's the... No, it is the same one that's on here, but some people like a hard copy. So it is the one that is actually in the board docs. But in case you would like to see a hard copy, you have one that's been revised. Please, please, please continue to provide feedback like you did up until today. And that's why we were making changes actually throughout the day when I would hear from you or you would send different feedback. So let's just remember, the mission and vision is totally... So let's just, remember, the mission and vision is totally different now, this is before we came into the meeting today. Uh, several changes you'll note as we look at the governing priority. Uh, someone asked about success-ready students, so think about the governing priorities as our headers, if you think about it from if you were reading a document or, and then looking at our commitment. We made a change to the commitment statement on the governing priority one. It was initially, we are committed to prepare all students to be college and their career-ready. We added, based on board member feedback, with an emphasis on each student reaching their full potential. Because it was concerning, uh, or was shared, that maybe students that are, that have I E Ps and stu- parents with students of, uh, special education, might not see themselves or see their child under this committed to college and career-ready. And so a child that has an I E P, uh, we're making sure that they reach their full potential based on the goal. So that's why that language was altered, so every child and parent in our district sees themselves in this plan. Any comments or concerns about the, the change in the commitment?
I like it.
The entire vision?
Yeah, now it looks like it ties to it a lot more naturally.
See, you all were just on top of it, you knew what was coming, I, I love it. Now, as we move, so keep, we're gonna keep going, please stop. Um, some of the governing objectives are similar to what you saw, uh, before Thanksgiving. We did make some word changes, uh, changes based on your feedback. Uh, and so if you look at those governing objectives, we made sure, for example, 1.2, we changed that to say implementation of district adopted curriculum aligned to Missouri learning standards. And then if you see 1.2, it says evaluate, adopt, and implement appropriate curriculum on all subjects at all levels. Also, there were some comments and concerns, if you look at, um, SMART goal 1.3, around the usage of the word behavior versus conduct. So we made a change there and substituted behavior for conduct. And that was, once again, this is based on feedback from board members. As we looked, we also, if, uh, a change from last week is, or two weeks ago, is we really emphasized high-quality professional learning for teachers aligned to evidence-based practices. You see two additional SMART goals there. It was initially a part of our discussion around strategies, but we wanted that to stand out. There will still be strategies attached to this, and so that was based on some feedbacks. I'm gonna stop under governing priority one, uh, to see if you have questions, concerns, or want anything, um, would like anything removed.
I like the additions, thank you.
I like the additions. Can, how would you feel about switching govern- governing objective and SMART goal 1.3?
Okay.
Because the SMART goal is not as well-stated as the governing objective.
Okay, so SMART goal-
You don't know what implement a framework to proactively teach and support appropriate student conduct. So I know what that means, um, so we're gonna implement a framework to do it. But I like the objective, because it says, we're not just gonna implement it, which is established, we're gonna maintain, and it-
Okay.
I, I just like the way the objective-
You said flip those two.
I would also-
That's what you said, right? Okay.
What was that?
I also agree.
I said I agree, particularly with regards to, um, um, following the, whatever expectation we have, making sure that we have a commitment to those expectations. Kinda in align with, um, our young speaker today. Make sure that we're doing ourselves.
So you say make SMART goal 1.3 the governing objective, and make the governing objective the SMART? Or, or, as long as the SMART goal is the objective, I don't-
Cuz you can word the objective however you want. Yeah. We can just say- The maintaining the high expectation part is a part of what needs to be added, I, 100% agree.
I, I agree that we're, the way it's written right now is SMART goal 1.3, I just don't care for that wording as much as I do the one above. I think the one above is a much more substantial statement.
Say that again.
The one above is a more, is a more substantial statement, it's more in the direction that I agree with. Um, yeah.
Okay, so you're saying keep the-
I agree with Maryam, I don't know if it needs to be switched.
So we're saying switch.
How do you feel about that? Cuz that's the reason.
Well, the most important part of that being, um, you saying the government objective, establish and maintain high academic and behavioral expectations for each student. I'm totally behind that statement.
I would like that to be the goal.
You wanna keep that as the governing objective?
Yes, the statement below that as a SMART goal, I'm not.
How do you feel about using the governing objective as the SMART goal?
She's saying, so it would say, switch those two.
Fine, but if we switch it and we make the, then that other language, and I'm still not that excited about, becomes a governing-
Yeah, well, we're gonna have to work Smith.
Because I, I don't, maybe, I don't know if I heard Sharita write, but, um, I just think establishing the expectations and sticking to them, like she said, is more, is-
Not more important, equally important.
Is, um,
Important part.
incredibly valuable to handle the issue that, as I read the feedback from our surveys, was like the most overwhelming issue we have that people have support with from our stakeholders, or general consensus with our stakeholders, is that we need to address behavior and slash discipline policies. Um, and I think we need to address that head-on, rather than saying we're going to just establish a framework, uh, to support appropriate conduct at schools. It's not just about supporting it, that's a piece, it's about establishing, uh, the right code of conduct and sticking to it.
So, is what she's saying.
It is, but the nuance, is she's saying switch it, I'm saying, I could lose that language under 1.3 entirely, I just don't like the language of it as much.
Okay, so let us play around with this.
I don't like the language of it.
Of 1.3, that's what I'm saying.
I like the language of 1.3. But I like the governing objective.
Right, so we will, so we're gonna rewrite the SMART goal for 1.3, but leave the governing obje- objective.
And I guess make the SMART goal mimic the governing objective a little bit more?
A little bit more, okay. Okay.
And, and, well, since I just heard myself say that, and before we get too, too long in here, I would also like to make the request that you not call it governing priorities and governing objectives, because I think it was, I, I'm constantly flipping those words, and I think it's confusing. If we, if we, I don't, leave one or the other, like if we had a priority and objective, but having a governing priority and a governing objective, drop the governing on one of those, I, I feel like.
Just have objectives? Okay, we'll drop governing under, uh, in front of objective, okay? Okay, okay.
And keep it in front of priority.
Just go to priority two.
Can we just go back to, just one, one word, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Pedagogy?
What?
Pedagogy.
Pedagogy.
Pedagogy?
Uh-huh.
We do that one, yeah.
You struggle with pronouncing it, or what it means?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a, it's an odd word, pedagogy, okay.
So we're in education, and it's an education-
Of course, we're in education.
It is, it is an educationese term. Cuz you could throw out an engineering term at us and we'd all go, huh?
Yeah, right.
So, yeah.
How about effective teaching?
Effective teaching.
It's an instruction.
But along the same lines.
Strategy, instruction.
Because it is for the, for the layperson to understand.
It is, you're right, Scott.
Effective teaching.
That is the, that is the only sentence in which the Oxford comma is used throughout this document?
Can we go by that Oxford comma?
I'm sure there was discussion.
Oh, you know it was. Okay, we'll, we'll work on that some more, thank you so much.
Priority two.
So you're driving now, you're driving now?
I am.
Wait, wait, I'm not done, moving on to priority two.
The same, so pedagogy along, the same thing as professional learning community.
Uh-huh.
I didn't know what that was, until I, yeah, I didn't know what that was, until I joined the board and learned about it.
Yeah, good.
And, well, I don't know if this should be in here along the same lines as pedagogy, and I don't know if that's necessarily, like, I don't wanna be committed to, this is the only way that professional learning can occur.
Well, I guess, well, I, I just kind of a district, um, model that we've been doing for, hmm,
but it's not a layman's term, I mean, it's, it's something that-
A good word.
People use, huh?
Layman's term, yeah.
Do you think professional learning communities is a layman's term?
No.
I didn't know what it was.
Or the pedagogy.
Better than the other one.
And by essential content knowledge, that means the teachers know the content of their lessons.
So like the biology?
Yeah, I mean, that's already a given, right? Okay.
Yeah, okay, um, another thing that I think was really important, based on a lot of feedback that we've gotten, um, and just important in general. Um, so we say like, governing objective, I guess they don't have a number, uh, one, above 1.5.
It's five. Oh, you talking about the program?
Was it five? Okay, that's how it goes, okay, so five, governing objective five. Provide high-quality professional learning to teachers aligned to evidence-based practice. I think it's important, and there's more places in here that maybe that opportunity exists, where I think it's clear that we not set the framework that we are just providing professional learning to teachers, that teachers are valued and we're engaging with them in the process, that we're engaging with them versus just providing to them professional learning opportunities. Cuz that, that can sound a little bit like we're just telling them, it's, it's our way or the highway, you're doing, this is what you're gonna do. Um, and I think somewhere in here, it's very important that we very clearly show support, um, for, for teachers in general, and communicating with and working with teachers, and valuing them as what I think is the most important resource of the district, is the human resources aspect.
And remember, we have a committee, and that's why annually you vote on the professional learning plan, or the professional development plan. So that does entail bringing people together to provide input, it is a formalized process that is required by the state. And so that followed, that will be a strategy that we would continue to utilize. Uh, so that, that is in place there, uh, there, in that committee, those people are part of that membership for a number of years. Uh, but that is, that's what we presented to you last May, uh, and so that's part of that strategy ongoing, not feedback.
So I, I guess what I'm suggesting is, rather than just saying we will, we will provide quality professional learning to the teachers, that it be something more along the lines of, um, we, we will engage in, um, you know, collaborative efforts with our teachers.
Strategy.
Uh, uh, as, as the, the single largest resource in our district, or something like that.
That'll be an action plan, I would guess.
Strategy. Yeah, I know, I know.
And, and, and those that, the real professional learning, uh, teachers.
Right, it's just a nuanced thing, cuz you, I mean, we do hear some feedback that some, some teachers can feel like they're being babyed, or I don't know what the right term is, but, uh, it's, it's just a nuance in the language, in my mind, that we collaborate with, rather than dictate to.
Moving on to the question, so I see that in the governing priorities, preparing them for college and their career-ready. So can I assume that somewhere along here, there's gonna be a strategy, and maybe it falls under, um, removing barriers, or review programming to ensure access, or maybe it falls under, um, mastery and all, I don't know, but looking at how we do, cuz most kids won't go to college, so, right, and minority of students go to college. How do we look at how we prepare them for their career, whether it's workforce, vocation, or military? Is that gonna be a strategy? That's coming up as a strategy, you know, looking at, we have enough programs, and we need more, do we need less? Do we need more of this program, or less of that program? Okay, that's gonna be a strategy, and it's gonna fall under, where do you think?
It is, was, uh, review programming to ensure access, the opportunity for all students.
You think it's gonna fall under there?
If I'm not mistaken, that's part of our draft there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, that, cuz it's in our governing priority, but then it doesn't get a goal, so it will be a strategy.
As we think about our career and technical education department.
Like, you know, we have different things at different high schools, and have different programs, and-
That when we look at, we may fall under SMART goal three, four, twelve, three. Oh, yeah, cuz we made changes, so we made changes since-
Oh, I didn't see that earlier, yes.
Right, okay. Yes, yes. Yes, we did, okay.
Didn't see that.
You're driving, so go ahead.
No, no, I'm happy to, I need to get the backseat anyways.
Okay, so we are moving on to governing priority two. Not, um, there were no major changes, if I'm not mistaken, through this particular area, based on the feedback that we received. I know there was one question about a board member, but I think it was around facility needs. But remember, this particular priority deals with physical, as we think about the financial piece of developing a long-run, uh, range plan to address employee compensation, retention, and facility needs. And then in, uh, governing priority four, it talks about the actual facility, so that was the difference, I think a board member asked about that. Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, jump in.
The superintendent, deputy, they will develop everywhere else, you can check that out.
Oh, yeah.
Just talk about that.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Just say develop across.
Yes, yes, we just need to, to address, to revise that.
And so on something like that, just like the superintendent or deputy may be a little bit, you can assume that, or it's a little bit redundant or unnecessary, is it unnecessary that it would also, to put in something like, uh, board-approved, because we, will that be something board-approved?
Yeah, yeah, because when we bring it back to you, uh, with the strategies, it will be time-bound, so it'll show when it's coming to the board for approval or presentation. So some things are approval, some things are presentation, it depends on what the, also the letter of the law calls for as it relates to school district operation.
So anything in here that says develop a strategy or develop the framework for, am I correct, in assuming that that would be something that would probably be board-approved?
Approved or presented, it just depends, like I said, let us push out, flesh out all the strategies, and then we bring it back, and then that's where you also say, you know what, this is something that I think the board should actually approve as opposed to a presentation. So I think it's gonna get into, once we develop those strategies, and we have, we've been playing around with them, um, we'll see that, and what we'll do is we'll match it up. Like, some things require you to actually approve by law, but you could also say as a board member, you know, we want to approve this particular type of plan moving forward, whether, if it's, if it is the long-range, um, facilities plan, or the compensation plan, something like that.
Okay, I, I would like to comment that anything in here that says if we're developing a plan for something, that I would like for that plan to eventually be a board-approved plan, if it's a plan. We're actually developing, uh-
I don't wanna slow down the operations of the, the district, so I can't, I can't sign that, because there's a whole lot of operations that need to happen, that we can't wait for board approval, particularly, you know, with board members who aren't educators. I mean, like, we can't approve everything, that, we have to trust our superintendent to, to develop some plans, and to do some of the work of operations that none of us are really-
Yeah, I don't think it's everything, there's only two pages here and only so many SMART goals, so I think there's only a handful of items in here that say develop a plan for. So I, I don't, I don't think it's, uh-
I'm not saying anything, I'm just saying whatever the developed ones are, I can't co-sign that, and because I think that we need to allow the district to operate without having us fingering everything, we don't need to micromanage it, that's my, that's my opinion.
Let's wait and see what they are.
We'll wait and see what they are, right? Um, Anita, how do you feel about, I know I'm doing a lot of swapping. I like goal 2.2, I like the objective better, because it's very specific, whereas the goal is very generic. The goal says, long-range fiscal plan. Okay, maybe that should be the objective, but the SMART goal is really specific. It addresses employee compensation and retention and facility needs. I like that as a SMART goal better. You see what I'm saying? The objective above goal 2.2, how do you guys feel about that? Cuz it's specific, cuz we want, we value our employees, they're our number one resource, and we wanna, it's not just a long-range fiscal plan, fiscal plan, it's a long-range plan to address employee compensation and retention.
I agree with that.
I like, I like the objective, but to change the goal, cuz the goal, this is, the SMART goal 2.2 is the same as the objective. But you're developing a process to create a, thing, uh, for a plan, you're developing a process to create a plan.
Okay, oh, I didn't see the word process.
Yeah, so, you're developing, but just-
I'm hearing you say revise the SMART goal 2.2, you need to revise SMART goal 2.2.
Cuz it's very tied to the objective.
Are you saying that we need to just create a plan, we don't need to develop a process to create a plan?
Right, yeah.
We just need to create a long-range fiscal plan, right?
And I, and I like actually having the specifics on employee compensation and retention and facility. It's not just any plan, it's to address, cuz you know, it's becoming difficult to hire bus drivers, and, you know, all that.
Right. All right, so that's, anything else under governing priority number two? Okay, so we'll move to governing priority number three, and note, uh, board members, a few changes since, uh, the first version of this document, actually even yesterday, um, is that we added some additional SMART goals under governing priority number three to address concerns as it relates now beyond just engagement, community engagement, but also as we think about, uh, celebrating our partners and our volunteers to enhance community-wide, um, support of the district students and families, but also looking at customer service to all stakeholders, ensuring opportunities to share direct feedback and receive prompt, uh, support. So that was, those were changes made from our previous discussion, and then we added another objective, which was to create and maintain strategic partnerships to provide real-world educational opportunities for our students. You go back to the original theme, even from the feedback of the survey, you saw a lot of, uh, from feedback from constituents saying real-world opportunities, and so going back earlier to the question about career and technical education, this is another place where a strategy would play out for students that choose whether to go to college, go to work, or go to the military. Questions, comments, or concerns on the governing priority number three?
Give us a second, because you've added a lot of SMART goals.
Mm-hmm.
And we're now way over-
And we're now way over. Gosh. Still have four priorities, but we went from 10 to 11 to 15. Hold on one second. So you added 3.2, 3.3, and 3.4?
Yes.
But I don't understand 3.3. Is there any which if you had to get rid of one, which one would it be?
3.3.
It's not that you're getting rid of it, you're going to do it, it just it's not going to be a goal, it's a strategy. Do you know what I mean?
It's not going to be.
I'm asking everybody for you, it'd be 3.3?
Yeah, because it's it was the one area that we did, we got positive feedback on was the area that, you know, our stakeholder set that had improved and they liked the direction that we were going. So we made substantial improvement in that area and it was an area of strength that we had.
We can continue as a strategy under 3.1.
I think I agree, it seems more like a strategy than a SMART goal.
Right, so now let me read 3.2 and 3.4 because this is new coming in front of us.
Mm-hmm.
That's fine.
Process. 3.3. I was just going to mention on governing objective, create, maintain strategic partnerships to provide real world. I think what folks are referring to by real world, I hear it a lot, is practical. I mean, I think that's another real world, I mean, practical educational opportunities, so hands-on.
Well, I think what we heard from Jim is not so much all.
Jim.
Was not so much that we was to incorporate those opportunities throughout the curriculum for all students rather than what as opposed to necessarily having a lot of ancillary programs that offer those opportunities to a handful of students.
So then there.
So I'm not sure that the way this reads exactly does that. I mean.
The strategies underneath it still could address that.
They certainly could. They certainly could, but just I guess rather than the goal being to create or maintain these partnerships, the goal is to, I guess, provide real world experiences for each student.
Right, and that becomes that's under the strategy part. It plays out through strategy.
So you mean the objective is maybe to evaluate?
The SMART goal to me would be more the broader vision being the SMART goal would be more to provide real world experiences for each student as compared to and then beneath that in the strategies you would have maintaining partnerships with institutions and businesses and such.
Well, you have to partner with them first.
Well, no, you have to strategy first of what you're trying to accomplish. And what we're trying to accomplish is more real world opportunities for each student.
Creating and maintaining, so we need to create and then maintain what we have. And in order to do that, I guess the SMART goal would be, remember, SMART goals is something we want to be able to monitor and.
Right.
We can do that by, okay, are we, and we want to monitor that, test it. Are we partnering with businesses that allow us to create and maintain those strategic partnerships? So, I mean, I like it as it is. The only thing that just made me think about that was does everyone understand what we mean by real world? That's those practical experiences within our schools, like our project of the way and some of the things we have going on in the buildings where students don't leave the buildings and go to a choice program. So, I mean, I do.
What I'm saying is the is the goal for us to provide those practical things for each student because there's there's students that have a hard time participating in the magnet schools or in the pilot program we just announced. It's hard for them because it's an extra burden on the family for transportation alone. So and those are things that we do provide and maybe will provide as a way to accomplish our goal of providing opportunities for each student. So it just seems to me like the it's just a little bit more of a strategy. Partner with them to accomplish.
To bring them into the buildings, into the schools.
I understand that. I'm just saying it just it doesn't seem like the right place. It seems more like a strategy. And under a SMART goal, I would say our SMART goal would be to find a way to measurably state that we should try to provide real world.
So you want to put that under?
Real world, whatever the term we just used was, practical applications for each student.
Where would we put it? Because we really.
You could go under governing priority one.
It doesn't.
I think it would replace this SMART goal 3.2 and then SMART goal 3.2 would be broken out into strategies beneath it. Am I looking for it wrong?
Maybe 3.4.
3.2 is.
3.4, sorry.
Which one?
3.4.
Yeah, 3.4, I apologize.
Just make it a standalone without the governing objective above it? Just want to make that SMART goal a standalone?
Are you saying to take out the word create and maintain strategic partnerships? Just start it with provide real world educational opportunity for all students and the SMART goal be create and maintain.
Yes, and then you break out more specifically how you're providing those real world opportunities as strategies.
They have it, they capture it.
And I think initially, we need to focus on partnerships, this is around culture. So if we made that shift, use that objective, real world, 3, make it a business, make it a strategy, SMART goal, we may want to shift it to success.
A shift at urban.
Success, ready, number one.
Then there's the partnership, strategy, goal related to real world.
This is what we said about 130, 145 today.
So then that would give us how many?
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, we're fine with that. We're laughing because we talked about that earlier today.
So this is 3.4 and 3.3 can also be a strategy. So now 3.2, can you explain that to me because I don't understand that?
3.2.
Sorry, let's recap before we do that.
3.2.
3.2.
She's lost it, recap.
That's okay, I'll catch on.
She just asked for explanation on 3.2.
So are we still wanting to add that 3.3 as a goal?
Yes, yes.
We're not striking, yeah, as a goal, more.
As a goal, but as a strategy, okay. And 3.2 is really intended to focus on the community partners and volunteers as well as the community-wide network of support. So that would include our family support services department as well as partners like United Way and Care to Learn and then our volunteers. For instance, we have recruited and cleared 1,600 volunteers this year so far as we get them more engaged at the site level to support.
Trying to get back to pre-COVID levels?
Yes.
Okay.
I like it a lot because we get a lot of folks who are engaged with the district on a negative level and this provides an opportunity for us to enhance and improve collaborative processes that that allows people to look at us in a positive way because we have a lot of folks who come here. Hopefully, we get some of those folks to go out and meet collaborative partners in a positive way with our district.
And really, this work aligns with our ongoing effort to be more strategic in the way we're identifying what opportunities we actually need partners to engage with and volunteers to volunteer for. So I think, you know, rather than sign up to volunteer and help us out, we're actually assessing where is the greatest need and then how can we align with the most strategic partner and the best prepared volunteer to make sure that we're doing the most effective work? So that's this is the strategy behind just refining that process and making it better serve the district's mission.
And then it falls under culture, collaborative culture, and then I'm assuming one of the strategies will be communication.
Correct.
You know, it's right now, it's hard to know how to become a volunteer. You know, you have to do this, you know, you need a background check now.
Yes.
This and this and to communicate.
And also, it's that opportunity to really back up and assess because we've not had a chance to really do that yet to say, how are we currently utilizing volunteers and partners? Is that the most strategic?
Unless you're like in PTA, you kind of don't know what's going on.
Right.
I mean, I'm just saying.
So this is all about kind of backing that process up and making sure that it is more strategic.
Steven, did you say we've had over 1,600 people?
Yes, we've had, we've cleared, we've had more than 1,600 volunteer applications come in at this point of the year, which surpasses the entire previous school year. And we're not even halfway through the year yet.
They don't have to run through background checks?
Yes, yes. And that is a process that can takes multiple weeks, yes.
Okay.
Can I come up to the top line here, governing the governing priority that we are committed hard on you that again, this is some more nuanced wordsmithing here, but it's similar to what I was speaking to about the teachers. I think it's important that we, when you're talking about communication, we don't we don't provide communication to we engage in communication. So if I could offer a rewording of that with similar words, it would be instead of we are committed to providing proactive communication, collaborative opportunities, and engagement for all stakeholders, I would propose we are committed to engaging in proactive communication with all stakeholders.
Okay.
Because I think it's more important that we establish that we're not dictating, we're not just dictating blasting out communication to you, we are engaging with you on that process.
We do that now as a strategy, so yes, that's fine.
Okay, but you've added collaborative opportunities in there.
We're committed to engaging proactives. They can add that in, yeah.
Engaging the active communication with all stakeholders.
Collaboration.
Yes.
You can add opportunities in there.
Wait, what was that? Put that in again. This time you're knocking out opportunities, though.
It's an even trade.
Let's move on to if nothing else.
You just knocked it out, right? Okay.
We're going to move on to governing priority number four.
Wait, you'll I didn't get it down. You'll send us to us?
Yes, they have it down and we're going to send it to you.
I'm getting tired, I'm just not keeping up.
We're all.
No, they're typing it as we go along so we can make sure we have it recorded. Everybody's engaged and typing.
Scott has one more comment.
Industry, you have partner with this is 3.4, maybe you're redoing the whole thing anyway, but 3.4, partner with business, industry experts, post. It's industry experts have to be in there because you get industry experts from business and post-secondary institutions.
So what do you want to, want to take something out?
What do you want to take out?
I'm saying industry experts, partner with businesses and post-secondary institutions. It's supposed to, I'm not, I'm not sure, industry experts. Don't you get industry experts from businesses and post-secondary institutions and other entities? What's the?
So an industry expert, you're an engineer, so we would provide opportunities for our students to shadow an engineer. So when you think about an industry expert, you're thinking about someone that specializes in that particular area.
So you're getting those from businesses.
But they may not be involved in your business.
Could also be like a firefighter.
Could be a professional, like an architect, engineer, acute.
All right, very good, thank you.
All right, so governing priority number four. The change we made included, I think, around adding the word safe and then we actually added a second SMART goal. And this was once again based on feedback board members from you as it relates to governing priority number four. So please take a look at that and see if you have any of those changes.
Priority four, maintain physical safe and quality. I agree that we had to maintain the vote. Some of them we don't have yet, so we don't have it to provide to maintain yet. We need to provide it, provide and maintain or see what I'm getting at?
Or establish and maintain?
Yeah, establish and maintain, yeah.
And you do provide quality spaces.
Well, I don't know if we can establish quality spaces because.
Provide.
We can sure work at it.
Yeah, I mean, passes, there's many more built, I mean, there'll be another one. There's three phases.
I would add, if you look at 4.1, that's an alarm raise and sleep plan. I think that actually stop what you're saying, that's where we're going to play in for things that you're big on.
There you go.
And then 4.2 is maintain quality.
Oh, it's good.
Okay.
Got to be a shot.
I have two, if on, this is not on priority four, this is just an overarching thing. I have two things. One, my serious, my lawyer brain doesn't like the non-use of the Oxford comma, so I'm just going to ask, I'm just going to ask, is it an industry standard in education from a contractual?
Hey, I don't understand your question.
The third, the when you're when you've got a list of three, one, comma, two, comma, and three?
Right, but you don't need that second comma necessarily.
Uh, you do, but.
I use it, but.
I suppose it is optional, but in the legal field, it would be very problematic to have that.
Noted and will be.
And I'll drop it, I'll drop it.
Since you bring that up.
Yes.
What is up with not double spacing after periods now?
Wait up from a typewriter, you don't have to, that was.
APA, the new APA says.
Onimore.
I still do it too, so.
Onimore, serious note, however, I.
Double spacing is not serious? The Oxford comma was serious.
It is serious, thank you. Lots of people have lost lots, lots, lots of money by not including an Oxford comma, but. One of my suggestions in the feedback was in relation to the board. With with MSIP 6, my understanding is that we will be revisiting the strategic plan every single year now instead of waiting so many years. We are a very, I don't want to use the word inexperienced, but we're a very young board in that all of us except for our board president are in our first year of service. And I.
Term.
Term, thank you, thank you, our first term. And I think it's important to recognize that some of our stakeholder feedback, it wasn't a major theme, but it was an item of note talking about the board. And then also I'm seeing in the Board of Education feedback themes on here, the board commitment to effective governance. Part of that effective governance governance is having an understanding of how school districts work and educating ourselves on how boards work. So one of my recommendations was to include it within our strategic plan. I don't know if it's a SMART goal or governing objective, but I wanted to get the board's feedback on that and perhaps if if that is something that is important to the board, instruct that we include that in our strategic plan as a goal.
I like it.
So some boards put that and if you go back to our current plan, it says our commitment, I think it says our. So you will see that listed from district to district differently. Sometimes it says the board is committed to or it says we are committed. And so that is an option that leads into the strategic plan or it's sitting on top of the strategic plan, so.
Sorry, can you, is it in?
No, it's on our, if you actually go to our district website.
Uh-huh.
You gotta pull it up, just one second. A collect, yes, some board called it call it a collective commitment.
Yeah, I've seen those on the websites.
It depends on what the what the board preference is.
This would be the time to do.
Isn't that under here? There you go.
So there you go, our commitments, and so it can be a collective.
What is your?
Under strategic plan.
She can.
So you see the mission, the vision, it could say the board, it could be board commitments. And then you could.
But I guess what I'm hearing Danielle say is to add it into the strategic plan in order for us to maintain some level of accountability. And that could be a governing priority file.
Doing that, I mean, there's like continuing education. I would maybe suggest that we board members visit sites. What else you're saying, like, how would you, how would you, like, that could be a SMART goal under governing priority two. But how are you, how is there something measurable that you think we could make a commitment that each board members do to make sure that we are engaged and educated and contributing?
I think that that's something that we could come up with as a board.
Okay.
But because it's shown up multiple times, not only from board feedback, but also our stakeholder feedback, and because we're a younger board, and because we're going to revisit the strategic plan every year, I think it would be important to include as an objective or a SMART goal.
So what about, kind of like they did, so under mission and vision, we can have a board commitment and it can be a statement that's like we're committed to be engaged, present, professional, you know, things of those names, whatever words that we describe as a.
Many boards have had that, I'm trying to think, call it collective commitment?
How often do we revisit our commitments, though? I mean, in this process, we haven't even looked necessarily at our. And to Sharita's point, if it's in the strategic plan and we're forced to look at it every single year, we're forced to come up with a plan of what does that mean? What are we going to give back as a board?
I'm good with saying right there, top line, saying this is the board's commitment, right where it says our commitments instead of ours. I guess this is on the board page, which is say that the board, the board is committed to or we, the board, commit to this or something. I'm happy with that if we came up with language that we wanted to include there.
I would prefer it to be in the strategic plan.
It would, it would just be on, it would just be right below.
Just write down. Just write down here.
Be mission, vision.
Potentially, every quarter, we'll have a book review, like on board governance, or on, and they will have like a little mini books, you know, like a book club, or they'll do, you know, MSBA, you know, are you looking for like a formalized way?
Yeah.
Is there a policy, is there anything in the policy saying that we have to look at this on a yearly basis, or?
MSIP 6 requirement. That's MSIP 6 requirement.
So, there is, there is.
So, for example, the work we did with EGL qualified this year.
Right, but she's saying that if you don't have it somewhere spelled out, you're gonna look at what's here in the plan, and so she's saying either make it a separate governing priority, or make it under governing priority two, I think someone else mentioned that, maybe it becomes an objective with some strategies, which is the book study, it could be visiting site, it could be different things.
I'd rather put it under and not have it on its own, because while I think it's important, I don't think it's as important as.
I, I, I think it could easily fall under governing priority two, my concern with just making it a commitment is that we say it, and then we never follow up and do something about it.
And there's a number of strategies, and I'm thinking one right off the top of my head is whenever, uh, we have our regional attend, MSBA meetings, spring and fall, those are two great events that this entire board can make a commitment to attend, where we hear from districts in our region, what they're doing that's working as boards, so there's two great events, in addition to the conferences that are out of town, which we can't always attend, but those are two within driving distance, one-night events that can be part of our stuff, some of the actual.
Regional events for once a year, twice a year?
They're regional, do they have one in spring and fall?
Once.
Just once?
Three last year.
I don't remember.
Spring last, this year.
I have to say that, maybe our board was the only board that was unanimously represented in.
The last one?
At the last MSBA, I didn't.
That all seven of us were present?
Yes, I don't.
Was there, one in Branson?
No, not the one in Branson, the one in Kansas City.
No, I'm talking about the region, region tens.
Yes, um, but I mean, us, that, in that learning process, I learned a lot, um, that's, to me, that's where I'm getting my, I call it my CMEs, but my continuing education.
So, those are just some examples.
That could be a strategy.
That's, that's the point, she wants to make that a strategy, to make it a commitment that board members will do some of those things, maybe not all of us do.
Continuing education.
Do you wanna take a stab at that, to follow up with emails, that we could, not here, but think about it, take a stab at it, follow up as a recommendation?
We'll draft it, but don't be too specific, because, no, I'll tell you what, this, this is, we all come with our best intentions, this is a volunteer work, and you don't wanna...
But we're drafting, you're going to edit.
Okay, but, but I do think, I mean, that's, we don't wanna get right in the weeds
of everything, um, if y'all could draft the, the governing objective.
That's right, yeah.
Yes, and then eventually, that probably is something that maybe the board does get in the weeds about regarding the actual SMART.
Yeah, we'll draft, we're gonna still, we'll put it all there, and you just edit and change it, because we wanna keep it moving, because what you adopt on the 13th, although it can be changed every month if you prefer, but we wanna have it as close as possible.
We can get in our own weeds, right? It's not gonna be its own.
Yes, as far as.
We can get in our own weeds.
Can I make a suggestion, though?
Satisfies MSIP 6.
Can I make a suggestion, though? I asked that this was a policy procedure before, because I think really, this shouldn't be part of this, this should be a policy to, for the strategic plan, and part of the policy, or part of a procedure anytime, is how often do you review this?
Yes.
And you're adding, part of it is a requirement to review it on an annual basis.
So, we should come up with a policy.
You're right, call it a policy.
And, and like Granita just said, there's no reason that we, as a board moving forward, need to make revisions every three months, or as programs of presentations coming forward, that this is a living, evolving document.
So, we would say, and a minimum of every annually, but we could, we could do it more often than that.
And that's the difference between the last MSIP and this one, is now we're required to review this annually.
Right, but I'm saying, not put it part of this.
Do you think MSBA's gonna come up with a policy that we can adopt, or do we have to write our own policy?
No, I don't think, because I'm trying to understand why you're writing a policy.
Who's our policy writer?
No, I mean, we get it from MSBA, but I'm saying, you're saying a policy.
Or a procedure or something, that, I don't, just don't think it fits to be in here to review this, I mean.
No, she wasn't talking about reviewing, she was saying the board, board being committed to board governance, to see, continuing education, I thought that's what we were talking about, not about the reviewing.
She was saying, since we review it, that's something we would have to see regularly.
Make sure you hold each other accountable, basically.
To hold each other accountable.
I got a suggestion, how we do it.
So, the first leadership standard to MSIP 6 is about this exactly.
Yeah.
The local school board must begin engaging ongoing professional learning and self-evaluation in order to strengthen the level of practice.
Okay.
That's something they want this board to do, and you already do it in lots of different ways.
Just formalizing it in, in the strategic plan.
Strategy round.
Yes. My point being, Scott, if, if all of us had been on the board as long as Denise had been on the board, we probably have the education, that knowledge, although you can always learn new things, right? Um, but because we're such a young board, making it a priority.
Making this a priority.
Making our, well, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say priority, making it an objective, um, that we are committed to learning about board governance and.
About.
However, MSIP 6 said it better than I did it in 9:30.
Let's, let's not copy MSIP 6.
No.
More than a little.
Yep.
And I think that since it involves the board, you know, I don't wanna have a hand in the strategies for all the, you know, all the other things, but on this one, I guess we have to come up with the strategies, 'cause it's.
Right, normally what happens, anytime, we still do it, and then you change it, so even, so when you hear, like I said, the board is involved in it, normally staff still lays the groundwork, and then you, just like this, really, you're editing and making revisions, we drafted this, but it's with your input, so it's same thing.
Yeah, so can you push that to us with some suggested strategies, and then we can give feedback?
Exactly.
To have a couple rounds of it before we have to vote on it?
Right.
Especially on this one.
Right, it will come with the strategies.
Like Denise said, we can get in our own weeds.
Yes.
And one of the.
And we can always edit it.
Yeah, one of the conferences I attended, when we went to Kansas City, was a board president conference, it was like one of all afternoon, and one of the things they talked about specifically with MSIP is a requirement, is that the board must every year, as an MSIP requirement, do a self-evaluation. So, we've met that requirement this round with what we did with our consultants, but this time, next year, this board will need to do a, a formal self-evaluation, so some process will, that will, is required every year. So, that can be a part of this.
That could be a strategy.
A strategy, one of your goals.
We, we were still on governing priority four before we got EGL on this one.
Well, everyone had, we were.
Yeah, we kinda heard from everyone, this is.
No, I hadn't, sorry, um, so on government, I don't think anyone, I don't let anyone have it.
I did say that, if we're done, I have an overarching.
So, on governing priority four, on 4.2, we put the word physically in front of safe, and I like that, and I would like for that to be in front of the other appearances of safe, in the governing objective and in the governing priority. We are committed to physically safe and secure environments that optimize learning, would be the, and then below that, it says maintain safe and quality spaces for all students and staff, and I think, uh, my recommendation, or my request, is that that, we be consistent with that, and put physically in front of each of those instances of the word safe.
Under the governing objective.
Yes. Governing priority and governing objective.
Oh, okay.
I'll say that.
Oh, under, we, okay, I see what you're saying.
Not physically everywhere?
Physic, let's be physical, baby.
Okay.
Physical, physical. Uh, yeah, so, no, we are committed to.
Want to see all the print in to physical.
Well, it says, we are committed to safe and secure learning environment, or safe and secure environments that optimize learning, I'm saying, we are committed to physically safe and secure environments that optimize learning, and below that, it says maintain safe and quality spaces for all students and staff, and I'm suggesting we say, we maintain physically safe and quality, physically safe and, I don't know, that's kinda weird, but physically safe and quality spaces.
That's exactly like 4.2, it's like all 4.2.
4.2 is the same, it's the same as the governing objective.
I'm saying, we be consistent.
4.2 just needs to go out. It's the same as the governing objective.
Yeah, but it needs to be there, because the objective is not a goal.
It's the same with the word, take, add the words physically in there, it's the same.
It is.
But we do need the SMART goal, because that's the one that's measurable, so I, I see what you're saying, it's redundant, but it's important that it be a SMART goal.
Okay.
If we're gonna have it consistent, I would say remove the word physically.
And I'm pretty strong on adding it.
Wants it both places.
Right, I understand.
So, but I'm just thinking, okay, so sure, we want it, um, physically safe, but what other safe is there?
Emotionally.
Mm-hmm.
Emotionally.
But that wouldn't be.
Mentally, we don't, we wouldn't want bullying in our classrooms.
Yeah.
But when we start talking about other terms of safe, those things would be different.
That comes under behavior.
But the governing priority's about quality learning environments, and those things didn't create a quality learning environment, those other kinds of safety, but, what do I do?
And I, thank you, I've requested or suggested, and I have not read through all the board member comments, um, but to me, safe and secure includes both the physical and the mental and the emotional safety of our students and our staff.
Because that's what creates a quality learning environment, not just a fortified building.
So, consistency is the issue, I would say, then remove the word physically from SMART goal 4.2.
I feel strongly about leaving the word physically in there, because all the things that you talk about come under governing priority one and three. I, I see four as an operational, um, you know, sort of like, does Nicole wear the hat or John, kind of side of things, and I, I see priority four as a John thing, which is an operational facilities thing.
Travis.
And I, I meant, I just meant the deputies.
Yeah, I agree, because.
Who'd be with which would be?
Quality.
Oh, okay.
Physical, quality learning environments.
I would just leave it as it has been drafted.
And I disagree, and Miriam disagrees, and, and Scott said something, but I'm not sure, so.
I agree with Miriam.
Okay.
To add the word physically.
To the governing objective?
Not to the commitment, not to the commitment.
That's it on that.
To both. Where the word safe appears here, it's, it appears three times, I'm suggesting that we are consistent in putting physically in front of that word.
Right, so it's just two times?
Well, there's three total, 'cause it's four point, it's, it's under the commitment, it's under the governing, governing objective, and it's under 4.2.
Right, but it's already there under 4.2.
Correct, and I'm saying, on all three occasions that that word appears, that we put physically in front of it.
Add it twice to appear a few times.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, twice, yes.
Yes.
Question, on the commitment to change the large list of facilities, that would make the effort physical.
Oh.
Say that again.
Quality learning facilities?
Get it to safely secure facilities.
It's less, uh, confusing.
Then you have to change the governing.
We were talking about physical.
You change governing priority four to quality learning facility.
I think that's more clear, I'm sorry, Scott. I think that's more clear about it.
You see what I'm saying, governing, change governing priority, environment there, and we are committed to safe environment ties to the priority.
Quality learning.
Change both of those?
Facility.
I don't think you have to, because if on down the road, board wanted to focus from facilities, things in the environment, it should, but, case of commitment, environment, so.
I'm good, I, I think I'm okay with either one of those options, either making physically safe and secure environments, or.
Facility.
Secure facilities.
But I do like leaving qualities in there.
Sure.
We're using three different words, environment.
So, in the commitment change.
We're gonna change environments to facilities.
All right.
You guys do whatever you think is best and send it our way.
Yes, we will.
I think that's clear, what, what John just said, it's clear that this governing priority is about, it's about our facilities and our infrastructure and our buildings, uh, because without using that word, it can blend over into some of the other things that Miriam said, maybe blends over into the governing priority one a little bit.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so we will make the changes based on the information that we've heard tonight, we will, uh, so board members, the next step, the last part of the slide is just talking about next steps, so the goal is, uh, Friday to send you a draft of the, um, changes from tonight, and also a draft of strategies, uh, and ask that you review those, if you have any feedback from Friday up until next Monday afternoon, prior to our meeting next Tuesday for our workshop, please feel free to send questions or suggestions in, and then next Tuesday, if we receive changes or updates, we'll make those changes, and then we'll be prepared to meet next Tuesday for our workshop, to dig a little bit deeper, uh, to further explain the strategies, um, and then take it from there, and then after next Tuesday's meeting, we will then send you basically the final document on Friday, the, is that date? The ninth, that we released the agenda, but it'll be just, of course, executive content.
So, we meet next Tuesday, the sixth.
Yes, it's a retreat.
And then we're expected, so between Friday and Monday, give you some feedback.
If you have some.
If we have some, and then you bring that to us on the sixth, and we have, should be a short, I guess we're looking at strategies, I guess, then.
Yes.
That's what it is, 'cause now, we hashed all this out.
Mm-hmm. But what we will do to, we can actually do this tomorrow, let's do two steps, let's just do a two-step first, let's edit the, send you a document, this revised document tomorrow with the edits from tonight, okay, so that's step one, so tomorrow is the 30th, we will revise and send this to you, okay? Friday, you will receive a draft copy of the strategies for our discussion next Tuesday at our board workshop, but if you have any questions or feedback, once you receive the document tomorrow, so the document on the 30th, the document on Friday the 2nd, uh, send those in, and if not, we will be prepared to discuss everything on next Tuesday, the 6th, and then based on everything from next Tuesday, the 6th, we move forward, finalizing the document, uh, for your vote on December 13th.
So, we will be voting on December 13th?
Yes.
I thought we were voting on the 6th, so it's on the 13th.
On the 13th, right.
So, that's a retreat, between the six.
So, we're voting on this on the 13th, and currently, the bond proposal is also on the 13th.
The language, right.
The language, and if I remember, Kelly had brought this up, and I wanted to, to second that, I feel that this should come in the agenda before the bond vote, the strategic plan, if we could do that, it's always coming at the end, but if we can reorder it.
Right, I mean, that's fine, that's fine.
So, we, uh.
Remember, the 13th is a combined meeting, so it, it will flow in, kinda, just like the normal.
It should all be done.
Yes, I just, just wanna point that out, thank you.
The 6th, retreat on the 6th.
And this.
We'll have a pretty good eye. Okay, so just to follow up, so you're going to send us tomorrow, our revisions from tonight, because it will make sure that Steve has an opportunity to see.
Can he see this too, 'cause it's important to see this version also.
Yes.
And then we're gonna try to, then on Friday, you're gonna try to send us some strategies?
Yes, we are, yes.
Thank you, and then we're gonna get back, feedback to you Monday.
If you have any feedback, yes.
Any feedback Monday, if that's a quick turnaround, then we meet again now on, I'm sorry, I just wanted to double check.
You're welcome.
You know that Steve.
Questions or concerns with the time, proposed timeline?
All right.
Thank you, been a great discussion tonight, very lively.
Thank you.
I think we accomplished a lot.[1713.12] We accomplished a lot.
Yes, we did.
Okay, moving on, 14.01, superintendent's update. Do you have anything else you would like to provide?
Along the lines of communication, we sent out on yesterday to staff and parents, information around the two calendar options, asking for feedback. So far, we've had over 4,000 people to respond, and so once we finalize that, we will get that information to the board. We're proposing probably to, normally we would vote by December, but with so many things on the December 13th agenda, we'll probably come to the board in January. It's ready, the skeleton is there, but we'll see what happens. And then the, just a reminder to parents, the Magnet School Lottery closes on Friday, December 2nd. Students who are currently enrolled in 3rd, 4th, and 7th grade can apply. And then we have our two ribbon cutting ceremonies for our two, for two storm shelters. Field Elementary, the ribbon cutting is Friday, December 9th at 1:15, and then Twain is Thursday, December 15th at 1:45 p.m. And I know those sound like awkward times, but the schools were already hosting events on that time, and they wanted their students to be, be a part of their celebration, so that's why the times are 1:15 and 1:45. And board members, those dates have been placed on your calendars, and also proposed ribbon cutting ceremonies for the last projects of Hillcrest, Jared, and York have also been placed on your calendar for second semester. That concludes my comments.
Hey, thank you. Okay, moving on to board comments, so we're ready to hear reports and comments from board members, anything?
I know that all of us attended the conference in Kansas City, and I know that I've heard most of the board members talk about how they've learned a lot, and it was a productive time. I promised some of our students who presented at the conference from the Academy of Fine Arts and the Academy of Exploration, maybe also the Ag Academy, that I would give them a shout out. I left their names at home, but I do remember one of the young ladies, I believe her name was Molly, and Molly, Molly was at the Academy of Fine Performing Arts, and I asked Molly, what, why did she love her school? And she said, she talked about how she made so many friends there, and people understood her there, and we talked about her finding her people, and she was just so excited to find her people at the Academy of Fine and Performing Arts. But those students did a great job talking about their programs, and they're talking about how the learning impacted them in a different kind of way, and they were all excited about learning, and I loved it.
That's great, and shout out to the esports, too. They really came up there, and they did a really, really good, it was gold watch, cool to see.
Made us proud. Anyone else have any comments about?
I promised everyone, including John, that I was gonna bring these cards, and I forgot. I will bring them to the board retreat. You know what I'm talking about, because you wanted them to.
You gave us one.
Yeah, I gave you guys, but I brought one for everyone. What was that?
I recall, yes.
And I apologize, I...
Were they from the conference?
It was from Robert's Rules.
Robert's Rules, really basic one, and I'll be sure to give you one. I got a nice little stack for us, and I apologize for not bringing it, I just, I'm not up to snuff today, so sorry, I meant to.
Comment, I'd just like to say to you, Dr. Lathan, this process with strategic plan, it's very, it's become very evident to me how much work that you and your staff have put in for this, and how much work, caught in the middle of seven different opinions, tried to put here everyone, and arrive at a document that we can all agree on. I did notice a lot of this work that was put in over the holiday weekend, too, and I mean, I, I don't know what work you put in, I just saw the kind of turnaround time, and only holidays in between, so I assume, I mean, I can only assume, and what you guys did, sacrificing your time with the family or whatever to do that was, was great. So I just want to say, with where we stand right now with this process, and we've still got a little bit, just a little bit to go, I'm very thankful for how you and your staff has approached that.
Thank you.
Here, here.
Yes, what you work on in your week off, because we...
You mean, the three times that you called me?
I've never called. Wait, we could just call?
Well, he did call, and he did text, and we kept playing phone text, so it's okay. No, it's good, it was good.
Thank you, and I know Steve sent out something like 11 o'clock on Tuesday night. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all, thank you.
Yes, anyone else have anything to say? Yes, and going back to MSBA, I had a number of, and, you know, I can't give you the quantitative number of, but a significant number of folks that stopped me talking about, first of all, our staff presentations, a number of people that attended. And this was on Saturday afternoon, when many people leave the conference, at 3:30, whenever our superintendent and our chief communications officer did a presentation on, and Scott, our board member, Scott, did a presentation on communications within our district. And the room was almost full, which is not something that happens often at the last day of conference. And people were so impressed with things that our district is currently doing to communicate internally and externally with stakeholders. So that was, for me, it was awesome to sit in on and hear what was going on, and then also all the comments that, I was just kind of sitting on the back row, that I heard from people around me about that. And then also, our esports team was there doing a demonstration, also our brother to brother group.
That's right.
They were there, and the number of people that commented on what find young men, and what they needed to do in their district to start a chapter. And so I said, I can't tell you that, but certainly they can tell you that, and they were the hit of that conference, I believe. And the parents that they made, and they're talking with people, and so Springfield Schools made us proud of all the number of students we had there, and with the students that Sharita mentioned. So it was a good conference, and, so I just wanted to mention that. And then also for our board, board attending the ribbon cuttings that we have coming up, this is a great time for us as a board to be out and get a chance to talk to the folks in the public. It's a great interaction, and it's a great time for us to be, us to be out and hear from people that want to tell us, you know, their excitement for buildings, and things they think we can do, continue to do, and do a little differently, or do a little bit better, or certainly happy with what we're doing. So that's a great, that could be a great strategy for us as a board to attend as many, and I know we, everyone has jobs and can't attend everything, but those that you can are really good, so. Okay, well, moving on, upcoming meetings. Oh, I'm sorry, did I leave anyone out?
Danielle, you don't talk about the astronaut?
I mean, that was the highlight of my trip.
Well, it was absolutely awesome.
I love space, and seeing a real life astronaut, and hearing him speak was...
Pretty cool.
It was cool.
Pretty cool.
And I shook his hand.
I got a picture.
And I told him where the restroom was located.
She got a picture. And the students did, also.
And the students, sorry, I kind of jumped in there. Well, that's cool, we got to shake his hand. Okay, upcoming meetings, board retreat, so we've already talked about December the 6th, but make a note that's at 3:30, we'll be meeting at 3:30. And then our combined study session is December 13th, so we're gonna be busy. And then all of our other events, so we're gonna be seeing each other a lot. Happy holidays! So then our, so now we're moving on to six, unless anyone else has anything else to make a comment on. We're moving to 6.01, the plus delta, so remember that this is a great time for us to make a little note on what worked tonight, and if you have something you really liked, or something you think that we could do to improve our meetings. And I really appreciate your comments tonight. Yes, we do have a very hardworking superintendent and staff to help us through this process. And so now we are to the point where we can vote to go into executive session. We do have executive session tonight. The recommended action is that the board meet in exec session to discuss personnel matters as provided in section 6.610.0213 and 13 RSMO. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Sharita, do I have a second? Miriam? Thank you. So any comments or questions about exec session? I don't think so. Hearing none, let's vote. Motion carries. At this time, we will move into executive session.